That was hilarious. That was so funny.
We would like to welcome everybody to the county council meeting today, October 22nd. At this point, boy, it's a good day. At this point, we'll have an opening by council member Barbara Tidwell, please.
Thank you. Only thing that I'd like to say is I'm grateful to live here in this country and then live in this valley, and I'm grateful for all the people that are here. And I'll finish my comments in the form of a prayer. Our heavenly Father, we're grateful to be gathered here in this beautiful setting. We're grateful for all the many blessings we enjoy. We're grateful for each other and for all the people that live here. We're grateful to be able to serve. We pray for thy guidance to be with us, that we may serve with wisdom and do what is best for all concerned. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
You'll please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion on the review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Or, excuse me, the amended agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the amended agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. How about the minutes of October 8th, 2024?
Well, I read through them all and didn't see anything that was appeared out of line, so I'll make a motion in 30 minutes.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of October 8th, 2024. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I don't know what we'll do without you, Carl.
Nobody else reads them?
Yeah, they hope they do, but they all sit back because they know you're the motion man on that one, so. No, we appreciate that. Well, now, is there any? I don't see anything on the agenda for the executive. Is there anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only that, I am truly and sincerely encouraged by all the work that Wes and the council is doing to move forward towards the final budget. There have been a lot of great meetings and great ideas, and his office is working day and night to help everyone figure out what's going on, and I really have appreciated the collaboration with the council on all the questions they've had as well. So I'm really excited just to continue to be here at your service to help Wes and the council come to that completion of the final budget. And we're sad to see Micah go. Other than that, I congratulate him on his time here and look forward to working with the new policy analyst when he come around. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burgess, would you please, on items of special interest, we have a presentation to consider of a final ARPA project request?
Yes, so you should have the information in your packet. There's two pages that I'll be talking about. I just spent the last couple of hours kind of going through and balancing and making sure where we're at, and it's changed a little bit, and I'll let you know that. Each week, I send a weekly report, and if there's any feedback that you would like, any other information, if it's not clear, let me know, ask questions. So on that weekly report, and I know that you don't have that in front of you, but I talked a little bit about it in the appropriations committee meeting, and I want to just clarify a couple of things and give a little more information to the full council. So that weekly report has a left-to-award amount. That's the difference between what has been awarded in the 72 projects that you have reviewed and approved throughout the, so far. And tonight, I'm sharing some additional projects, possible projects, that could be funded. They are all eligible. I've reviewed them, and they are eligible. The amount of money on the last report was about $321,000, and actually, it's a little bit different. And if you want to jot this down, it's $327,116.40. So $327,116.40. That's what's left between the amount of money that we received and what has been awarded out into different projects. On that weekly report, on the last weekly report, just a few days ago that I sent out, I added some, it's called the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. I refer to it as LATCF. That was actually funded from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, and we received two payments of that money. We received it in '22 and '23. Those amounts total, well, we've since spent $2,262 out of that, so there's a balance of just a little bit over $450,000. So the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, and the reason that I bring that up is it was funded from the American Rescue Plan Act, like the ARPA that we've been talking about. It has no deadline of when it needs to be spent. I just need to submit a month, or a annual report, and as long as I keep reporting zeros until we spend it, there is no deadline when that money needs to be spent. The other thing is it is not, it doesn't have to go through all of the criteria and the eligibility, so it can be spent on any government service except lobbying. So that, I just, that amount left is $450,313.60. So that can be spent on any government service. Earlier, several months ago, or maybe early in this whole process, I mentioned that we had received it and suggested that you could consider it in case some of the projects came under budget, or went over budget and you needed some additional funds. I just want to bring that to your attention. That money is there. So, the ARPA, possible ARPA projects, and again, these are eligible, and these are in your packet. So the first page is what I will be talking about. And again, $327,116.40 is what's available. Just keep in the back of your mind, there is a project for the countywide contract tracking system, or a software, that was awarded $60,000. There may be a possibility that I will need to come back and be approved into another project by the council. And then there may be another $3,000 or $5,000, $3,000 to $5,000 in some other projects that they may not be able to spend by the end of the year. Again, it has to be spent or put in a contract or obligated by the end of this year, December 31st, 2024. The projects that I'm going to present really quickly is one for the building and grounds. And if you look at the second page, there is five different projects. One for security cameras, one talking about converting some door locks, another one is putting some security film on the courthouse, this building, and the admin building, and then some physical vehicle barriers and some lights in the parking lot. So the first one, security cameras, is just...
Okay, never mind. Go ahead.
The first one is the security cameras. It's, each of these buckets, or the five possibilities totaling $145,900, can be done individually. So the cameras, to upgrade, to add additional cameras in some of the areas not currently having cameras, it comes to $29,000. To upgrade the door locks, so that in case of an immediate lockdown, that's going to cost about $5,000. The window security film on the windows and some of the doors would be about $4,900. Physical barriers, these would be like planters or bollards or something, so that a vehicle can't drive into any of the buildings, and that would cost approximately $10,000. The lights in the parking lot, the bid that they got was for some solar lighting that would light up the area. Currently, I think by the DWS building, that's kind of lit, but over in that southwest corner, it's not currently lit, so there's a bid for that. So that, each of those could be done separately, or if you did all of them, it's $145,900. The next one is, possible project is in the recorder's office. This is for the interns, two, six interns, to complete, to update the boundaries and ownership on the maps and redraw them and digitize them. This would include their wages and any benefits, FICA, and if there's any state and federal, it would cover all of that. That total request is for $236,830. The clerk is requesting at the ballot center out at the airport to upgrade and to add some air conditioning and put in an air filtration system at that. That $50,000 is probably a high estimate. Currently, they're working on getting bids for that, and we should have something before the next council meeting, as far as a bid goes. In IT, IT was funded, a site, a county site networking, and he's got several sites throughout the county, and they're all networked together. To complete that project, he needs, and he's requesting another $5,000 to do that. And then, this system that he's put in, because they're kind of, because of the uniqueness of it, he's asking for a spare parts, for $27,000 for spare parts to provide redundancy. So if a part goes out, he'll have it on hand, and the system will still be able to work rather than having to wait, you know, a few days to weeks or months, you know, the supply chain, how that is working. Any questions about each of those projects?
Yeah, on the recorder's office, that's just a stab in the darkest, whether that gets done. Is this over stabbing to make sure it gets done, or what? Because that seems like a lot of money there, so.
I, it does. It's for six interns for full-time during about six months, or maybe?
I can speak to this, because I speak quite frequently with Tanil. She is so backed up on all of the mapping, and so, like, incredibly backed up, that if she could get any help with this, this is, this would really be beneficial for her. I mean, this is, if you would go talk to her, you could see that this is, would be really helpful for her to be able to just get current, and it would be cheaper to have the interns be able to do it, because they wouldn't be doing it as technical type of things, as she could use her more technical staff for the other work, and they could get, kind of get a little more, the more basic mapping done by the interns.
Yeah. She's not counted all of them, but she gave, threw out a number of maybe 10,000 maps or something.
Yeah.
They need, there is quite a bit of work there, and the interns would help quite a bit. Now, I want to mention one thing. What we would do, if this was approved, what I would do is I would submit this estimate to the U.S. Treasury. That is a lot of money, $236,000. But if we submit it as an estimate to the U.S. Treasury, and they have said, if we do that, then it is obligated. And if it's not spent, then it can be spent in another eligible project that's already under contract, if it happens to come under bid or something like that. So don't think that you're going to put it in and we'll take the chance of losing it. We won't lose it. And the others, if they can't be spent by the end of the year, I will make sure they get put in contracts.
Alma?
Uh-huh.
I just have a question. Okay, on the first page, let me go back there. Okay, the 145.9, is that already taken out of the 327.116?
No.
Okay.
So the 327.116.40 is what's available to put into these projects.
So we need to subtract the 145.9 from that amount?
No.
No?
No. So you have available $327,000. The total request of all of these projects is $464,000. So you're short by like $137,000.
Yeah, that's what I have, which we're short, $137.
Yeah, you can't fund all of them, but on that, on that sheet for the total of 145.9, you can pick and choose the projects on that one, or you can, you know, adjust wherever or not fund any of it, or?
Okay, my next question is, if we're short that much, can it come from this LATCF?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was wondering, could we fund all of them if we use that portion of that funds?
Oh, we have. ARPA is certain qualified things. Do we need to reserve the 425, because its broadness is greater than what the ARPA is? So, that would, to me, there may be more critical things out there that we're not aware of, that may need to be done, that would not fall under the ARPA thing, is what I'm looking at.
So we'd have to cut back these requests somehow to equal the 327?
All I'm saying is, is maybe before we stab into that 425, or whatever it is, we see what other departments have criticality on, rather than what was fitting under the ARPA, would be my wish.
Right. So the 327 is, that's left over, and possibly, if the contracting software doesn't come through, that would be another $60,000. So that would also need to be obligated. All of this ARPA needs to be obligated by the end of this year in a contract or spend, and then it has to be spent by the December 31st of 2026. The LATCF will be available, if you don't spend it or put it in other projects, on January 1st of 2027. It will still be available unless you use it in some other way. But the ARPA has to be spent by the end of December 31st, 2026.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I say something about the security upgrades, quickly?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want the council to know that, first of all, that that list is put in a basic priority order, as prioritized by a loose group of department heads when we started asking about security upgrades needed here on the grounds, but also that the $97,000 for the lights in the parking lot can be scaled. And we are thinking that it's probably a capital project that should be handled in the next near to semi-near future, similar in discussions with what the process we're going to have to go through with the whole capital list. But the idea is, if you only wanted to put so much money towards the lights, but you thought that was important, you can do, the more money you put, the further out away from the building you get. That was more of a security concern from our employees getting to their cars at night. I just wanted to add those things.
Thank you for that.
Others? Any other questions? I think we'll be looking at this and try to get this on the future. Well, boy, the 12th is going to be a busy one.
Did you guys pass this before? December 1st?
Yeah. So we may still try to get it on that.
Boy.
You better have some no-doza coming to that meeting, so, okay, we'll get her. We'll see what we can get, make sure we get put on that next board.
Okay.
Council meeting there.
Okay.
Board of Equalization. At this point. Diana, would you help us there? You've got that on your...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So before you, you have the culmination of all of the Board of Equalization hearings that you have voluntarily attended and issued preliminary decisions, is the formal adoption of these BOE decisions. So it's sorted, first of all, by your, the action at the far right. So the first one's in the peach color. They're all a no change. Then, when you get to page four...
Diana?
Yep.
What was the significant adjustments?
Yep. We're going to get to, yeah, we're talking about that. Yeah, so I'm just saying, so as far as the organization in the purple, for the next few pages, those are all the changes, and at the end, there are 12 that were dismissed, that are in blue. So, as we kind of reviewed our BOE process this year to see if we can improve that in future years, it came to my attention that significant adjustments should be on the agenda. So in the past, I've just highlighted them for you. We've got...
Micah.
Four of them, I think.
We need to convene BOE first, before we talk about these things?
Convene before we talk about it.
I think we probably should.
I would entertain a motion to convene the Board of Equalization for Cache County.
So moved.
Moved and seconded that we convene the Board of Equalization. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Diana. Thank you.
I'm glad we got it opened. So, after explaining the organization of the decisions before you, here to ask for your formal adoption of the initial Board of Equalization decisions made at the individual hearings, and the significant adjustments are to be included on the agenda. So you have four of those listed, the first one being the 2, 46, and 15. These were to be listed, and that's going to be on page five.
Page five, okay.
Page five. Let me make sure we got...
The one's highlighted in yellow.
It's the dark yellow, and I've always put it in a dark yellow in previous years. We just haven't listed it on the agenda. So the statute has evolved on us, so we'll try to evolve with the law. So as you can see, this one got a $5.1 million decrease, and the standard is if it's a million and a 20% decrease, then that's what makes it a significant adjustment that needs to be on the agenda. In this case, it was the Mill Creek property. At the hearing with Josh Barnes, there was the discussion of cost and income approaches, and this adjustment was based on land comparables and the income approach. And then, moving on to page seven. You have the 4, 49, and 10, Circle Bar LLC, the adjustment based on comparables and a steep slope and a stipulation to the 2.1 million, down $1.7 million. Did you want to hear who the hearing officers were at each of these, or you can?
Throw us in the... Go ahead.
If you ask me, then I'd be glad to do that for you. So let's just move on to page eight. We're looking at parcel eight, 19, and five. You can see there, close to the bottom, this one got a $1.3 million reduction, which was Chase Burton Peterson. This was, adjustment was based on a factual error of percent complete. And that last significant adjustment is eight, 45, and 36, which was Mickel Land Limited. That was a $2.9 million downward adjustment, and that was a hearing with Ted Mickel. The adjustment was based on comparables and slope and restricted use.
That's all of them.
So if you have any other questions, there were, I think, three upward adjustments, which were light yellow, and they were very moderate. So any other questions for me?
Any other questions? I guess it would, let's go ahead, and it'd be wise if we had two motions here then. One for the significant adjustments, and then, and ratification, and then, real agreement on those, and then ratification of all of it, right? Or will, any adjustments or anything that anyone needs, bills? We all sat through those and went through those. Any questions on them?
Thank you, Diana, for you and the assessors for all your work on doing these.
It was a lot of work.
A lot of work.
Yeah, a lot of work, it was...
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the changes that have been presented, the significant changes that were approved in the Board of Equalization hearings. Did I say that right?
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we accept the significant adjustments made with those four parcels. Any comment on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the ratification of all of the decisions.
I'll move that we ratify the 2024 Board of Equalization's decisions.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded that we ratify the 2024 Board of Equalization's decisions for Cache County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Diana, thank you very much.
And I'd like to extend a big thank you to the entire council for all the volunteer work that you do in going to these hearings and really staying in touch, you know, with our taxpayers, our constituents. It's, I feel it's important for the taxpayers, you know, to see their electeds there, and for the electeds to hear those taxpayers. So it's really moving to me that you guys all take that time, and thanks for getting me in.
The Board of Equalizations.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to, that we exit out of Board of Equalization.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that we exit out of Board of Equalization. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's go ahead and move on to the public hearings that we have. Stephen, you're going to, I guess we set them. Oh, one, two, three, there's three that we set. Thank God, I want to get them all done. I'll entertain motions that we set those public hearings.
I'll move, oh, go ahead, Carl.
I was going to say it. I'll move that we set a public hearing for November 12th for the following three items. Ordinance 2024-20, Vernon Investments Rezone, Ordinance 2024-21, Chambers Rezone, and then consideration of a proposed property tax increase.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded that we set the public hearings for November 12th, 2024. Ordinance 2024-20, 2024-21, and consideration of proposed property tax increase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Pending action. Is there, I guess we had kind of some information that we needed from, on the budget? Was it, I think it was the attorney's office going to share some information on that? Don't mean, Taylor, was you going to share any information on that?
Yes, I just wanted to share one quick thing that I've been sharing with you this past week, just to make sure that in previous weeks, in the tentative budget, it showed that the county attorney's office was requesting addition... that the county attorney's office was requesting additional positions for additional personnel. That was oversight, and that was not correct. The county attorney's office is not requesting any additional personnel. We did, this past year, have two open positions that were open because of attrition. Those have since been filled, but at this time, we're not requesting any additional positions, and I wanted to make sure that you, the council understood that.
Okay. Any other information, questions upon the, on the budget? Got a lot to digest, a lot to work through. So, I know we'll be really digging into that information and stuff the next couple weeks, so, next few weeks, I should say. Let's jump down to ordinance 2024-18. Stephen, you'd like to address some of that?
Computer working? Should be. Okay, perfect. So, just a quick reminder and background on what we're wanting to do with this. So, at the last meeting, we went, the Development Services Office, I presented some proposed updated fees for the council for consideration as we move forward. One of the ones that we wanted to approve immediately were our building fees. And one of the concerns that the council mentioned is they wanted to ensure that our building, they wanted to see some comparables from the area and how the fees would compare. And so, we went ahead, I had our building department go through the different cities in the county that also do building permits. We do building permits for a lot of the cities that aren't listed on here. It's a little bit small, so I'm just gonna zoom in a little bit. Hopefully, that's better. And then, they also looked outside Cache County as well and got a couple comparables. So, as you can see right now, we took three homes of kind of the normal sizes that we see, and just ran the building permits for each of those, and depending on what city or jurisdiction they're building in. And so, you can see for the, for the thirty, or 350 size house, our current fee would be about just over 3,000. That would jump up to thirty-three, or 3,480 within, under the new fee schedule. For Hyde Park, that fee would be 3,361. For Logan City, that would be 3,677. For Nibley, that'd be 3,127. Brigham, that'd be 2,930. And for Ogden, that would be 4,493. And when you jump up in size, you also will see that we're kind of in the middle of the rungs again, that the fee would, for this home particularly, our fee would jump up from 4,150 to 4,408. In Hyde Park, that same, that same building would be 4,453. Logan, 477, 4740. Nibley, 4252. And Brigham, 3992. And then, in Ogden, that'd be just over 6,000. And then, for a larger home, you can, also, once again, we're kind of running in the middle of the pack, that our current fee is 5,724. The new fee schedule would bump that up to 6,032. And Hyde Park, you're just under 6,000. For Logan, you're 6,334. Nibley, you'd be 5,500. Brigham would be at 5,457. And then, Ogden would be 8,268. And so, and then, this is just a reminder of what our current fee difference would be for comparables. One thing that we're looking to do with this ordinance is trying to make our fees easier to calculate for, and make it more transparent, and also make it easier to work within the new system that we're getting. And so, instead of calculating out each building permit per the individual foot, we're bringing in brackets, so if your home is valued at a certain price range, it would fall within that bracket. And so, it normalizes a lot of these fees that are very comparable and work. And so, that's why you see some homes will be a little bit, some permits will be a little bit cheaper, some will be a little bit more expensive, depending on where you're at. But overall, for the entire budget, based on the several scenarios we ran, we're running about even, or in this scenario, you're about 0.82% higher overall in revenue. So, are there any questions?
Yeah, on that, I kind of had a, I know you had, like, breakouts, so many square feet, it says, and it's so many square feet, it's all sudden, if you went one foot, one square foot over a certain amount, then bang, all of a sudden, you're in a different fee.
Correct.
Why isn't it broke down to just maybe per square foot?
That is what we currently have.
What don't you like about that?
I think, one of the problems that we have is it's not as transparent of a schedule. It's more difficult for people to calculate overall. We also have felt that, generally speaking, homes that are in similar sizes really don't cost that much different to do the reviews and the inspections. And so, that's one reason we felt like bracketing them would be more fair for an applicant. And so, because if your home's a little bit smaller, or a little bit bigger, but it's still in a general range, it costs us about the same to do the reviews and the inspections.
Not quite buying that yet, I just, yeah, this doesn't make, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense in some ways. So, when you said fair, if it's the same price per square foot, however the size is, that's what you pay. Do you think there's a lot more time involved in a bigger home?
Yeah, so as homes increase in sizes, you know, your general smaller homes and medium and medium-sized homes, when they're kind of within a general size, our building team, it takes about the same amount of time for us to review those and to inspect them. Once homes get much larger, then it starts taking more time to do the reviews of the plans and for the inspections. And one of the things that our building department, as they're going through this, we're concerned about that, you know, you'd have a home that would be, that you'd have some of these different valuations here. And they are finding that a lot of these homes within these certain valuation points were taking about the same amount of time, but their fees were different. And so, the idea here was to try to equalize homes in different size brackets, because they would generally speaking, take about the same amount of time to do reviews and inspections.
So, if I'm building a house, and I only finish one floor, so are you only charging me on the finished square footage? And then, I decide, and I get passed on that, how does that go?
Yeah, so that normally falls back into, there's a different calculation and evaluation for unfinished space within a home, and that's what gets charged, based on ICC.
So, but on this schedule, we'd only be judging the finished square footage then, right?
I believe, let's see.
No, I don't think people build a home and, that they're not going to, some of them don't finish, but it's built structurally to be finished eventually.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, do we judge the basement if it's not finished, or what? This was part of my question last time.
I think, as far as assessing, you know, I think assessing would be different.
Yeah, so we would assess it differently. We do have a basement finish permit of $300. And so, if somebody comes in, let's say they don't finish their basement, then they come in later, that their basement finish building permit would be a cost of 300, based on the fee schedule.
You mean, someone actually would come back in and get a building permit to finish their basement?
It actually happens quite a bit. I mean, a lot of people, I, sure, there are a lot of people who don't, but...
Finish the basement.
Yeah. I think people get concerned that if they finish the basement on their own without a permit, then there's nothing showing that, like, the electrical or plumbing was inspected for resale. So, we like having the permit.
Other questions you guys might have on this particular area?
No.
Okay, keep going. There were some things you hadn't completed, right?
Yeah, so this ordinance only covers building permit fees, which we believe it is at a point where the council could adopt it. We are also looking at, in the future, or starting in 2025, we like to have a different fee schedule for a lot of, for several of our land use applications. And so, that'd be like our zoning clearances, subdivision applications, those type of, those type of items. And we're currently, one of the things I was asked for, we weren't quite ready for the, and our GIS fees, we weren't quite ready for those to be approved, and still aren't. Really, what, last week, when we presented it, we wanted some direction to know if we were moving forward in the right direction. And so, those aren't, those aren't ready for tonight. But we would, we would like the building permit fees to be adopted, or would recommend that the building permit fees be adopted, partly so we can move forward. We're about to open up an online application system. That building permit fees are a little bit more complicated to enter, so we didn't want to enter the old fees, and then re-enter them again in three months. And we're hoping to get that rolling in the next couple weeks, so, we feel like these fees are ready.
What does it take to change that? You're getting a new program?
Yep.
And it could be pretty flexible, shouldn't it?
Yeah, it is flexible. We can enter in the fees that are needed. It just, the building permit fees themselves are a little bit more complicated, like, to enter, we would need the company to do that for us, because of the calculations that are involved with calculating building permit fee. But the other ones are just a fee per application, or just a set fee. And so, those, I can go in and change myself once the program is running.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
You just talked about the increases for those building permit fees. The packet that we got has like 22 pages of different fees. Are all of those new? Are they changing? Are we suggesting that we approve all of those tonight?
Yes, that's the idea. They're all, all of them are new. Some of them are based off our current fee schedule, and what we currently charge. But yeah, all of these are brand new, which, that's one of the reasons, building, this is why we wanted to put them, only put them into the system once, because of how complicated they can be to put in.
So, the ones that say, like, 15% of base fee, you take that original cost, and then you charge an extra 15%?
Yep.
That's the new, that's what you're proposing to do?
Yeah, we currently do that already. Really, the biggest change in our, how we calculate our fees is, instead of going from a certain valuation per square foot, we're doing that, we want to move to that bracket system, where you, where similar-sized homes have the same price point.
So, I'm still a little confused, the, like, here's this one that says, manufactured mobile homes with attached garage. It's on page five.
Page five, okay.
Okay, it says 1,900. That's what we're currently charging. That's what, above it, it says the 2024 base fee. Is that correct?
I'd have to double-check on that one particularly, but, so, I don't know the exact charge for a manufactured mobile home right now. A lot of our billing, a lot of our building permit fees are based off of, well, the ICC valuation code table recommends that we bill for. And then, we have our own calculation that was adopted by the council, based off the table. And so, the idea with that is, it's not super transparent for how those are billed out, because if you look at our current fee schedule, you have to reference another table that's not even adopted as part of our code, and to evaluate what that costs. And so, when we created this fee schedule, they went through the different uses and different type of permits. And generally speaking, the goal was to keep these the same, but more uniform and more transparent. And so, I can't necessarily, I don't run these bills frequently, and I don't know the last time we ran a manufactured mobile home. And so, I don't know what that cost would be. But the idea behind this table is not to increase fees, but to try to keep them generally the same, or within a few percentage points.
So, this isn't our table, it's a state table? Like, I'm just confused at what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so this would be, so the table that you're looking at, this is the proposed fee schedule.
And now, it would be 1,900. So, now it would be 1,900, plus the 15% of base?
Yeah, that's what we're currently proposing.
Okay. But we don't know what it used to be.
Yeah, I don't know that right off that. I'd have to talk to one of our building inspectors or our clerk to answer that exact question.
So, we don't know what a percentage of an increase it is? That's what I was looking at, like, how, how do we judge how much we are increasing, at what percentage we're increasing all those fees, if we can't see what they used to be compared to what they are now?
Yeah, this system is significantly different, because you can, in the ordinance, under Exhibit 1, that's what is currently there.
So, will this help affordable housing?
It will, like I said, the idea is to keep building permits within the same realm. Honestly, one of the things that we find, that as long as we are quick and transparent with our fees, we tend not to get much pushback, because our fees, as shown, are pretty comparable to the others in the area. And most contractors are looking for quick service, which our general turnaround time for a building permit is within a couple days. By state law, we have 14, but most homes, we can turn around much quicker than that.
I do like the idea of actually listing the cost, rather than referencing a code somewhere that they have to go check.
Yeah.
That does make it more simple. I just don't know how we can compare.
I guess I would be interested, I mean, we should be charging fees that cover our costs. And I would be interested to see cost versus income comparison of these things, and, and also to see what we're charging now, and what the new, what the new fees are relative to that, to see what the increases, increases are.
Yeah, so, we could, if you'd like, I could work on getting a comparable table. It's a little bit difficult, because the structure itself is changing, even though, as mentioned, the goal was to keep the fees pretty relative, are relatively the same. But I could look at maybe pulling out some of those other type of uses besides the single-family homes, and bring some comparisons, what those would look like. I mean, really, the bread and butter is single-family homes. That's, the vast majority of permits that we run are those. Particularly, most of the permits that we run, about 90% of them are for the cities that contract with us, like Chiram and Providence and Smithfield. And a rest, about 90%, or maybe even less some years, is for stuff that's in unincorporated county. And so, that's really, the bread and butter is those single-family homes that are being built by big developers that we have here in the county. That's who our most consistent customers are, and those who we serve, service the most. But we do have occasional, like Barnes and accessory buildings, so Barnes don't need that permit, but we do have other, we do have other application types that are a little bit more rare.
Any more questions?
Last time, didn't you present the cost basis of what was in there on some of that, because you talked about the hours and stuff like that? And that's why you came up with the banded, or the grouping of the square footage, right?
Yes, that was more, that was more looking at our current, or that was looking more at zoning clearances, where we did that big review. The idea behind this wasn't necessarily to change our revenue, but to simplify our fee schedule for building permits.
Well, I'm in agreement, but I do agree, if you're one foot over the square footage, that becomes different, so, but, but yet, your comparison costs were in line, which is what we asked for one of the studies.
Excuse me.
So...
Well, it's...
If you can, if you're sure that you like the banded, rather than the cost per square foot, because that's what I asked last time, was the cost per square foot seemed to be more fair. But you're the one that's in it and seeing it, so if you can defend it, I'm willing to listen to it, so.
Yeah, so the... Yeah, so the whole, the, our building official and deputy building official were really kind of the brainchild behind it. They felt like they were running into, really it was transparency issues and, um, issues with calculation of fees that they felt like customers and residents were running into. And they felt like this system would be more equitable for them and would be more transparent. And so when somebody calls in, we can just hand them the fee schedule and they'll be able to calculate what it is. Um, where before we would have to run the calculations ourselves and they would have a hard time there. It, it was very difficult for anybody to verify whether or not we were calculating correctly, though. You know, obviously we, in my opinion, as we were, but we felt like this fee schedule would be more transparent. It becomes much more simple for somebody to calculate what their own fee is.
It seemed like on average, the fee increased by 300 in each section, so it wasn't huge amounts.
Yeah, and.
Thirty-one to thirty-four, thirty-four to another one, so. But that's what confused me last time is the bigger home got a lesser fee.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if you look at, excuse me, so under this comparison, you can see that, um, yeah, so these bigger homes have a little bit, just, yeah, they dropped a little bit and some of these smaller homes did go up a little bit. But I think part of that is just due to the six random permits that we pulled to run this calculation. Another part of that is there is, you know, one of the biggest costs for doing these permits is just travel time and walking through, which there's not going to be a whole lot of difference, um, time-wise between a 3,000 square foot home and a 5,000 square foot home. I mean, there is a little bit, that's definitely true, but.
With this, uh, with this increased revenue?
No, the goal, the, it will likely, the, it was designed to be about even. Um, every time we've ran a series of permits through, um, we've came out with about the exact same amount of revenue. So the idea was to try to keep our revenue about the same.
So the intent is to cover our costs?
Yep. Yep, exactly.
How much money are we losing?
Um, building wise, we're not losing any money within our building department. The fees cover the services that we provide.
Covering our costs.
Just covering our costs?
So the fee schedules.
So I guess what I'm asking is costs apparently now are more, so what's, what's the difference between the costs now and what will, what will make to cover that cost?
Yeah, so the biggest expenses our building department has is really manpower. We're currently operating with one less inspector than what we had last year. We have one currently funded, but there's been a little bit of slowdown in building permits, so we decided not to hire this year and fill that position. Um, the other, the next biggest expense is just vehicles, so purchase the trucks or cars to get out to the sites and do the inspections. Um, after that, it's normally software and training, um, because there's, normally there's regular updates to the building code and so just training on what those updates are and purchasing the books and everything else.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What, this is past the initial, so whatever council's recommendation, decision may be.
I would make a proposal that we approve the building fee, but then still look at the rest of this so that they can go. Does that help you?
Um, I guess the ordinance that's in currently in front of you is, just contains just the building fees. Um, we're not looking at changing any other fees tonight. So I think if that was the case, I would just want to know what, more details on what sections you'd want to approve and.
Well, just the understanding of the 22 pages, because I understand the building fees in it, so.
Yep, yeah.
It's all building permit fees, isn't it?
Yep.
So are you, are you making a motion that we approve the whole 22 pages of this because it's all building permit fees?
I mean, I don't want to step in and do what they're doing and tell them. I just have questions as to the band, the banding, because I felt per square foot, but I mentioned that last time. So, um, if Steve and his building permit inspectors believe this is right and they've talked about it, I don't know how else to adapt or whatever else. So yes, that's my proposal.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we then approve, uh, ordinance 2024-18, which is the building fees, the fee schedule regarding building fees.
So.
It says building fees right there. So, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes, okay.
Thank you so much, counsel.
The, the rest is yet to, the rest is yet to come then?
Yep.
Let's go ahead, initial proposals. The, this is here, a resolution 2024-26, uh, to, uh, is this by revolution? This is by resolution? Figure this was changed?
Revolution.
Okay, go ahead then, we'll turn it over to you, Mike, on this one.
I'm gonna need to, sorry, this screen is frozen again, so. But I'll start talking about it while this reboots. So this is, uh, resolution 2024-26. Uh, this is an amendment to the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual. Before I start getting into it, I do want to note that Amy Adams, our Director of Personnel Management, she, the, the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, sort of, she, she manages that. Only the council can amend it, but she's the one that is kind of coordinates that. And when there is a change, she's the one that actually goes in and, um, amends the PDF. So she's also the expert on it. So she asked that we actually amend a different part of the PPP manual that this resolution amends. But we can get to that at the end. It should, it would just be a different section. It would not have any substantive effect on the policy. It would just make the, she, she thought it would just be a better location in the manual, um, just a little bit more organized. But we can get to that, uh, when I, after I talk about it, because that would be an amendment. So this is a, a policy that would govern county council staff, um, which, uh, was, I wrote this policy and I, I was probably the most qualified person to write it because I am the only one who is county council staff. This is a, a policy that would govern both the, uh, the hiring termination and management and really sort of the expectations for county council staff, uh, both now and in the future. So I'll go through this. It's not too long of a policy, but all of this is new. So there's no red line version because this is, this is adding a whole new section to the manual. So starting off, um, this, this line here, uh, this actually is currently in county code that the county council make, may make staff appointments as are necessary for the proper conduct of its business. Uh, the hiring termination management policy expectations for the county, county council staff shall be the same as all other employees of the county except as it pertains to this section. So county council staff, uh, operate under the same policies, the same procedures that any other council, county employees would operate under, except for the things that this policy, uh, changes. So in the future, if there's something you guys want to change about your employee or employees, um, this is where you'd go to do that. So, uh, starting off just generally, um, clarifying that the county council staff serves the full council with administrative supervision provided by the council chairperson. So, uh, and this is not a change, this is how it is now. Uh, I currently work for all seven members of you. Um, however, administrative supervision is provided by the chair of the council. And that administrative supervision is defined in the next subsection, um, which is basically the, the typical sort of responsibilities of a manager over an employee. Um, so this would include conducting annual performance reviews, approval of time off requests, conducting exit interviews and other duties assigned in the regular management of employees. And again.
When is your exit interview scheduled?
We haven't talked about that, Dave.
I tried to push it down the road as far as I can get it.
Yeah.
February.
Near, yeah, three to five.
Or there was a vote by majority telling you go or not.
I want you to talk about the, uh, the staff pay is at the bottom. Mix some amendments there.
You guys don't know Mike is, is leaving for a different job, so.
This is my last council meeting.
Yes.
Train him and then they get siphoned off by other entities.
Greener bastards.
Greener bastard, yeah.
So next, the, um, the, the next few subsections kind of clarify the relationship that the council staff has with the council. So, um, clarifying that, that any council member may request assistance of council staff. Um, council staff, again, is there to serve the entire council. And any, any member of the council can, can ask the, the council staff, um, currently that's a policy analyst, um, to, to do what, anything they need in the regular conduct of their duties. Um, and furthermore, that when that happens, council staff is not under any obligation to inform other council members of that. Um, this is really to allow each one of you to have the autonomy that you need to, to do what you need to do, even if that may not be, um, in alignment with the rest of the council or other members of the council. And council staff needs to be able to serve both sides of those sorts of, of conflicts that you see in legislative bodies. Next, no county officer or department head may, may direct or order council staff regarding any matter. So, um, again, this council staff works for the council, doesn't work for any other elected officer of the county. There is one caveat there, and that is in subsection E, that the director of personnel management is still the HR, the, the HR person, the HR director or personnel management director for council, council staff. And, um, he or she, uh, will be permitted to, to do what they need to do in the regular course of their duties as it pertains to council staff. Uh, and then finally, that all council staff are at-will employees. The phrase in state code is career service exempt employees. Um, if you don't know what at-will, at-will employment means, that actually will be brought up later in the policy and we'll, we'll get there. The next section is the hiring of council staff. Um, this is the one part of this, of this policy that, that is essentially new because there isn't really, um, I'm, I am the first full-time council staff that to my knowledge that this county has had. And, um, and now that there's a, a new one being hired, this is all very new. And so this is a new part, a, a new thing. And, um, and so this is, uh, this isn't how I was hired, but my understanding is that this is the process and the, and the current role. Uh, so in the event that the county council creates a new council staff position or a vacancy occurs, uh, the council chairperson is then authorized to, to create a hiring committee. Um, and that the council chairperson can put whoever he or she wants to be on that committee. That's, that's kind of his or her prerogative. And then, um, and then that hiring committee will conduct a first round of interviews of, of any interested applicants. But, and then that hiring committee will then forward three names to the full council. And then the entire council will meet in an executive session to interview those three candidates um, for a second round of interviews. So, um, that, that would be a closed session, uh, of a regular or special council meeting. Under state code, state code allows for closed sessions, um, to discuss the professional competency, professional, uh, you know, professionalism of an individual, um, and, and a job interview would fall within, in that category. So you don't have to interview your future policy analyst in a public meeting. That would be probably a little uncomfortable. And, and then, you know, during that meeting, they may discuss, you know, what, what they wish, what they see. Uh, I assume that would happen after the applicants leave. If you're done with the interview, you can continue to discuss that in that closed meeting. And then once those interviews of those three candidates are completed, um, the, the chairperson will then extend a job offer to one of those three. I want to be clear, there is no vote, not at this point, the council does not vote for who they want to be their new policy analyst. The council chair decides from those three, but the council chair may only offer a conditional job, make a conditional job offer contingent on that person being ratified by a majority of the council. And so if that contingent job offer is accepted, then a member of the council would make a motion to ratify the, that, that individual to serve as the policy analyst. And a majority vote would mean that that person would become the policy analyst and.
Ratification has to happen in a public meeting?
The ratification would happen in a public meeting. The interview would not, but the ratification would. And that, and there's no getting around that. If, if the council is going to, to, uh, if a majority of council members, if it's your desire to make sure that a majority of you approve of any council staff, that needs to happen in a vote in a public meeting. There isn't really a way to get around that. I will say, and I, I can only speak for myself, that I, I view this position as significant enough, as important enough that, um, anyone who holds this position needs to be ready to have, for the prospect of having their name brought up in a public meeting and ratified by a vote, the same way we do with department heads in the county.
So Mike, that is because we cannot have a vote in a closed meeting?
Correct.
So the chair knows that the name that they're going to take is, I mean, they're going to have enough, we will have enough discussion that the chair knows that that's going to have to have the approval of the, of the council as a whole.
Yeah, there, there's not, the only thing that is, um, that, that is, uh, binding the chair in this process is that the chair can only make a contingent job offer. That's the only thing, that's the only way this policy binds, that's the only, uh, uh, really requirement this policy places on the chair in any way, is that a chair, the chair can only make a contingent job offer. And, but from those three, I, I mean, so imagine that maybe all, all three of the candidates, all of you guys are comfortable with all of them. Well, then that means the chair gets to choose which of the three, because the chair, it's, it's, it's going to be clear to the chair, I would hope, that, that anyone he or she would extend a contingent job offer to would, um, would receive majority support of the council. Any other questions before I move on? So the last part of this section is just stating that no individual may be employed by the county as council staff unless ratified by majority. Next, we have termination of council staff. This one's, uh, a, a lot easier, um, well, simpler, maybe not easier. At-will employees, that was mentioned earlier. All council, according, in this policy, all council staff are to serve as at-will employees, meaning that they, all council staff may be terminated at any time with or without cause. That's, that's true of my job now. I'm an at-will employee right now.
Now we know.
Yeah. And, um, the, the only other part of the section is, is simply stating that termination may only occur by a, a motion of a council member and a majority vote of the full council. And, and again, this is, this is really ensuring that any, that the council as a body is who this person is, um, answers to, no individual council member, that this, that, that council staff is accountable to a majority of the council, not just to the chair or vice chair or any minority that might exist, that it's, it's accountable to the council as a body. And the only way to really affect that is to say the count, the majority of the council. Uh, last section we have are rules of procedure for council staff. These are really just kind of expectations of council staff. I mean, most of these expectations, they exist for other county employees, but I think are especially important for council staff, particularly because of the unique position that council staff. that council staff is in, where I have seven bosses and whoever has this job has seven bosses rather than one. And that, that makes things a little, it's a little different. I'll just put it that way. So council staff are expected to represent the council and county professionalism and discretion. No council staffer may speak on behalf of, behalf of the county council or an individual council member without express authorization to do so. And then when presenting policies, much as, much like I am now, whether that be here in a public meeting or privately, the council staff is expected to present policies, whether proposed or current, with fairness, with discretion, and treat all matters fairly and set aside personal interests and agendas. The next two are, are kind of matters that deal with kind of this unique nature of council staff, where having seven bosses. So sometimes council staff is going to operate under the direction of the entire council. Other times, council staff will operate under the direction of just one or a couple of council members. And this distinguishes between those two things. So subsection B states that when council staff acts under the direction of the full council, this direction may only come through an action taken by a majority of the council in an open and public meeting. So if all of you, or even a majority of you, want me to do something, or my, my successor, that needs to be communicated through like a motion and a vote. That's direct, that's a directive. And, and as we're going to see in the next, next one down, that kind of directive is going to take a precedent, a precedent over a directive from an individual council member. So that's what we see in the next subsection, that any, any individual council member can ask council staff to do whatever they need, provided it does not conflict with direction given by the full council. So if a majority of you want me to go talk to Senator Wilson and say you want me to, to support, you know, some bill, but one of you wants me to be opposed to it because you're actually opposed to that bill, that, those are conflicting directives. And this provides some guidance there. My, in that case, if you've, majority of you have said that I need to speak and support to Senator Wilson, that's what I need to do.
That would have to be done in a public meeting?
I don't think that there's a way to get around that. I, I think that there's, I'm very uncomfortable and I, and speaking with our attorneys as well, if the council as a body is going to do anything, it needs to be done in a public meeting. Take any action, including directing staff to do something. So it is a little bit of a bureaucratic step, I, I recognize that. But I, it probably, we, we don't want to put into policy that you guys are going to give your staff directives offline. It needs to be done in a public meeting.
If I could just jump in, the basis, the overall chain theory here is that the people's business needs to be done in public and in open, especially when the council is acting as a body. So if you're acting separately, you know, you, you have your authority as a council member separately to order and to do something, work for you. But when you're acting as a body, it does need to be done in open and in public.
That's right. Now, I, I will say, I do a lot of things that are actually under the direction of just a few of you. And that's different, that's, that's the distinction Taylor's drawing. That's not the body directing me, that's a couple of you saying, hey, Micah, can you?
Get this information?
Yeah, get this information, can you, can you do this, do that? That, that's an important distinction that needs to exist in our policy, that, that that's going to be allowed, and that, and that could happen offline. But as far as when you're acting as a body, certainly any action you take, but anything you do as a body, including directing your staff, would need to happen publicly. The, the other prohibition, you can't ask staff to do anything illegal. So I think that, that makes sense. Last subsection in the policy is simply that council staff may not vote, make motions, or take any other official action. This is a prohibition that exists in state code.
So we, there's no way we could send you to a meeting that we were to be in and vote for us, right?
You, I could not vote. I could go to a meeting for you.
Meeting, but as far as.
I could not vote for you.
Okay.
And that's important, that, that's one of the distinctions between.
Right, yeah.
Executive and legislative power that exists in state code. The executive, executive, any executive officer can and does have deputies, you guys cannot have deputies. And I, I can't be that deputy, I cannot vote for you. So, but I can go to meetings, and even if you want me to speak up in a meeting, that's, that's fine too, but I can't, just can't vote. So the, I, I do have a, I mentioned that Amy just requested that we just place it in a different part of the PPP manual. The old section, the one that is in the, in the title, is section four dash F. And she just requested that instead it be put in section five dash I. So I would just make the request that, that there'd be a motion to amend it in that way before it passes at any point, just so we can keep the PPP organized in the way that Amy thinks is best. But it won't have any substantive effect. Also happy to answer any questions you might have. Any questions?
And since we vote on this, it goes into effect.
Correct.
When we discussed this in O and P committee, I suggested we add a line that says effective retroactive, they have to give five years' notice.
Then I just request that it goes into effect next week.
Well, we, we did vet this pretty thoroughly in O and P. And I would make a motion that we adopt resolution.
We'll have to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and adopt resolution twenty, twenty-four dash twenty-six, a resolution creating section.
I'm going to change it to.
Five I.
Five I.
Of the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual regarding policies specific to county council staff.
I'll second it.
Okay, I first probably need an amendment to change that to it. Are we okay?
Carl, is the amendment part of your motion?
Part of the motion, yep.
Okay, we'll accept that.
And he did state that correct.
Amendment seconded, that we change from four dash F also to V dash I, five dash I, and pass the resolution, or suspend the rules and pass the resolution, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-six, in creating this section of the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual regarding the policies specific to county council staff. Is there any discussion?
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimous. Okay.
Thank you for your help on this.
Yeah, very, very thorough. Thanks for everyone's input on that. I appreciate that. Let's go ahead and the next one here, we will be looking at the initial proposal for resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five on Harris Farm, round two, open space application. Who's speaking there?
Steven? Okay.
All right, I plan on doing a brief introduction to it. The applicant and the representative from the state are also here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the application and the proposal. You just got done sooner than I thought, so give me one second, I'll go up to the right So what we have in front of us today is a resolution recommending approval of the phase two, or the second round review of the Harris Farms Open Space Application. Just as a reminder, this is 225 acres, it's located out between Lewiston and Richmond. They're right adjacent to the Cub River that's running on the west side of the, of the property and kind of the Pepperidge Farm property, and that area is all along the west side of it. It's up here in front of the, to the screen. The council, a few months ago, recommended approval of the first round for them to move forward to the second round. So the biggest change that they've done today is they're still proposing the same terms, essentially to preserve, the vast majority of the easement will cover agricultural uses on the property. They'll likely have about 10 acres of wetland preservation up along the north with their partnership with North Logan, and a trail easement along the Cub River in partnership with the county in Richmond for preservation. But they won the, and so, but the, what they brought in front of us today is a funding plan and how much they're actually asking for. And so I felt like we should go through that and have a better idea of what is being asked. And so they, based on this, I believe the state is the one who did this analysis, based on comparables, market analysis, they'll have to go through as part of some of their funding obligations through a full appraisal of the property before it is funded through NRCS. But they've done some base comparables so they can move forward with applications. And so based on that, before the easement is currently valued at $3,150,000. So that is $14,000 an acre for the 225 acres. And the estimated value after the easement is placed on, which would be a 75%, I'm going to butcher this word, denumition in value, based on recent comparables, brings that down to $2,362,500. So they do have a few funding sources that they're looking at obtaining. The first one is through the Natural Resources Conservation Service, or NRCS, their, their agricultural conservation easement program. And they're looking for 50%, which is the maximum you can ask from NRCS, which would be about $1,181,250. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm reading a lot of numbers to you today. The next, they ask from us is 25% of the easement value, which is $590,625. And then they are also looking at a 10% about, from the Leray McAllister Working Farms and Ranch Fund, that is from the, that is through the state, at $236,250. And they would be looking at submitting that in next summer, when those applications become available. They're still in some talks with North Logan and potential green belt rollback taxes. And then the applicant is also looking at a 15% donation of the value, which would be $354,375. The applicant also has some project costs that equal around $21,000 for appraisal, easement documents, stewardship fees, title insurance, closing, and easement purchase price. And so just to kind of help out, because we have approved one of these before, which was Yelkorn Ranch, which is located between Logan and Nibley and through kind of Millville and Providence area. And this is the comparable numbers, what the county approved based on that application. And so you can see, actually, it's very similar if you look at percentage wise. For the Harris, the Harris property overall is a little bit, is about, is a little bit cheaper. It's not in as prime development, development area. Overall, though, their percentage that is being asked is very similar, that their NRCS contribution is 50%, which is pretty close to Yelkorn. Cash is actually a little bit lower. Yelkorn initially came in and asked for more, but the county only approved up to 31% to allow the applicant to go and seek money from Leray McAllister, which was recently approved. I don't know if you saw that in the newspaper just the other day. And then Self was.
Was approved?
Yep.
For $250,000?
Yep.
Leray McAllister?
Yeah. And so just to show some comparables and percentage, you can see the blue represents the Harris and red represents the Yelkorn. And so you can see the ask, and based on matching funds, is very comparable to the Yelkorn project.
You, excuse me, Steven, do you know if the applicant got their application into the NRCS by 10/7?
Yes.
Cool, thanks.
So the only other thing that I was going to show is COSAC reviewed this in the first of this month, and they, the resolution that's in front of you, resolution number twenty-four twenty-five, was reviewed and recommended for approval from the committee. And they did have three conditions that they tied on to it. So the committee recommended to fund the full asking amount of the $590,625, or no more than 25% of the final easement value, whichever is less. In addition, the county shall fund up to $21,000 in administrative costs. That's also something that we did for Yelkorn. This is funding to do some of those administrative costs are, there's almost nobody does it. And early on, COSAC felt that supporting those administrative work would be important to help support some of these processes go through. The next condition would be the county shall review and approve the easement documents and enter into a written agreement with the applicant before dispersing any funds. And the final is, the final easement, or easement or easements shall preserve the agricultural use of the property, wetland preservation, and establish a trail easement along the Cub River according to the Richmond 2023 Trail Master Plan. So the other items that have been updated in the packet since last time is we received a couple of letters of support in addition. If I can get down to them. So the first one is, we had one from the state. The state is looking at holding the easement if it's, if awarded and funded. And so that was the first letter. We also received a letter from Richmond. Essentially, their position is they're supportive of the trail preservation, but they're not at a position to build out the parking lot or act to build the trail at this time. And then there is also a letter from North Logan, this was part of their initial application that was reviewed, essentially stating that they are working with the applicant for wetland So are there any questions for me?
I have a couple. There, there was two things, like that wetland mitigation, and there was one other that says to be determined. So there's, there may be some other funding sources that come in. Will that affect the county's portion, or will it all go to the landowner?
That's a good question. I don't think the applicant, who's here, and you can ask him, but they have not clarified those points.
And then one last question on the original application. Question number five, it says, are you proposing to open any portion of the property to public access? And it says no. And I know we're talking about a trail. So is that just, is that just a mistake, or is that, how do you about that?
Yeah, so early on in the application process, their initial proposal was not to allow anything open for the public. But after discussions with COSAC and staff reviewing the surrounding master plans, the applicant decided to include the trail as part of the application.
Perfect. Okay, those are my questions.
And I have a question, and I don't know if you would know the answer, or if their help with, with the NRCS would know, with their application of the NRCS. Where we have two applications from Cache County, is that seen as like competition? Would they be actually kind of competing against each other, or do you think that there's any?
It'll be in different pools. So the funding for Yelkorn is already obligated to that project through NRCS, and the Harris application would be a new application in a different funding pool.
Okay.
So they wouldn't be competing.
Okay, cool.
The funding pool is not also timed, timed difference when funding comes in?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Stan, any questions?
This is super cool, thank you. Thank you for bringing this project in. So much land and cool, cool thing. Thank you.
Why didn't they put the trail right around those sewer ponds?
There you go.
Boy, you know, it's a scenic view.
It's got water, waterfront. Yeah.
Yep, anyway, other questions?
Matt, did you have a comment? Is it okay for me to open the floor to Matt?
Yeah, yeah. Matt, do you have a comment? Please do. Everyone's quiet when Matt talks.
I haven't seen this before, so thank you for letting. I haven't seen this before, so thank you for letting me have the opportunity. It seems like there's been some discussion on trails, but there's also some county roads that border this property and that also go within the property. So the public question that Sandy asked, and just if we're going to put this in an easement for conservation, I think there are either some vacation of roads or some dedication of roads, however the council would see fit, but I've noticed that roads haven't been on the discussion, so.
Yeah, that is. Our, our north facility is right to the south of it.
Yeah, I can...
That's ours, right there.
Yeah, so we do have a road that kind of dead ends right in the middle of the property. The road, there is a roadway that continues on, but it's a private farm road. And we can pull that up. Yeah, so there is a county roadway that ends right here and right here, that both kind of dead end into the property. This actually is right on top of a hill, and it continues on, but it's a private farm road.
Matt, would you like to see any, any type of, would you like to see the county make any ver, add any verbiage of what we would like to continue to do with those roads, or any contingencies?
The county roads up there. I, I'd probably be amiss if I tried to give any direction, like I said, the first time I've seen it, but I think if we're going to try to put something in, some conservation easement, but you have a public road that goes through the middle of it, it may warrant more discussion, and also that road would probably be prohibited from continuing in the future, so we're going to keep, I don't know if we, the council and us as a road department would want to continue to maintain a road that facilitates that as well, if there's not public involved. So I think there's some discussion there, but I'm not prepared at this point to offer one way or another, I haven't really had an opportunity to talk to staff nor the proponent, so.
Has staff identified where the trails are going to be, so that we know where, how that comes in with the roads? Just along the river?
Yeah, so the initial idea was just to go along the, the east side of the river, and it goes up and through. There's actually, in order to get to the next road to the north, there's only two more property owners, and that we are, potentially could be open up, would be open to continuing the trail to the next roadway.
Pepperidge Farm is one of them.
Yep, Pepperidge Farm is one of them. And, you know, Rich, Richmond's plan, they own all this property, so their plan is to build a trailhead right here, and then to establish a trail that goes along the river. And so that's the initial plan. One thing that we haven't worked out on, that we will have to work out the full details of what that trail easement looks like prior to funding, we've, if the council is amenable to the funding, then if that was approved, our next steps would be to work with the applicant and see exactly what that eas, what those easements look like, because the trail easement will have to, likely will be in a separate easement than the cons, than the agricultural conservation easement.
But how do these, how do these easements affect current roads?
So I guess, I'm not 100% sure. Currently, this roadway is not within their property, and so it's not included in the easement. So when it...
Conservation easement can't encumber a public road, so it would be, it would be left out of the legal description of the easement.
Yep.
And then we could work with the road department for any other considerations that they might need.
Unless we vacated that portion of the road on the property, and it could be included in the easement, correct, in the easement acreage?
It could be if it was vacated.
So that, that would be something maybe that Matt, you and Stephen would need to look at in the next couple of weeks, if we continue this and get that clarified.
I do think that needs clarified. I mean, I'm happy, I, I think this is an awesome project, but I don't want to step ahead and not understand...
It is an initial.
Yeah, it's an initial.
So we can get at least that detail, that clarification here, within the next two weeks, and as it comes back up on the 12th, we should be able to have that decision.
Because if we vacate it, then he still needs it, so it would almost have to turn over to the landowner, so that they could access the farm and everything else, so.
Typically, if a road's vacated by state law, it just gets divided up between the adjacent property owners. And so that would be something we'd want to look at.
And both those roads actually dead end, don't they?
Yep, both of them currently dead end.
Both of them, 106 and 108, I think they both just kind of go to, to a dead end. There's no loop. Does 106, does it join any more of the county property on that north facility?
Yes, the county does have access to that road from the facility.
That'd be the only possible, you know, only one that possibly that we could, the other dead end one's hard to really...
No, some of these roads I think continue in the future, but I don't have history on that again.
Yeah.
I, I think it just warrants a discussion of what the intent is, and what they want to continue to do, and it might be a good opportunity to vacate some of those roads if it's going into conservation easement, and also might be a good opportunity to try to find a road to continue on forward, adds robustness to it, you know, so that it could connect in the future to the north, so.
Any, any other landowners whatsoever, Zan? Any other landlords down there depend on that road at all, except for you?
Terry Spattman comes, which one, right there?
Yeah, yeah, down that 108?
Not just the 106.
Or 106, yeah, Terry comes 106, he owns property on the south side of that, yeah.
Pepperidge owns that to the north of 108, but they can access it from the other side, so they don't, yeah, they don't have access to it.
Well, we probably ought to have that addressed, we'll have to have that addressed maybe, and then, because it is initial, we'll just bring it up on November 12th and have those answers, or answers for that, and we can...
Move forward?
Move forward from there, so.
The only one I've ever seen on that road is Terry driving down, he's been with one to turn it on, he's gone, I heard that, in case, basically.
Oh, there's a couple, few young, few young couples have gone down there to make out, so. I, oh, not me.
Dave knows that road.
After dark.
No, okay, well, we appreciate that. We'll go ahead and do that, if that's okay. Okay, at this point, USAC Conference, any changes?
Not yet. We still don't know.
Council member reports, real quick, before we go into executive session. Mark, let's start down there.
I will just mention, the only thing I've been involved in was OMP, so we looked at the main subject of discussion in the council staff meeting, or council staff resolution, so that was mostly covered. There's a couple more pending items to go through, but I'm sure Barbara and Carl have some detail there if they want to say anymore about it, but that's all from me.
Okay.
I don't think I have anything.
Barbara?
Nope.
Sammy?
Appropriations meeting on Friday was another step towards finalizing our budget, and so we're just going to keep refining that project in the west. And I'm just encouraging each of you to reach out to Wes with your questions or any direction you want to give him, do that.
Carl?
Nope, nothing.
Well, the only thing I'd have is publicly thank Micah for everything you've done.
Can we all cry?
You're a good man, you've been, you've been great for the county, I, you have served with honesty, integrity, and character, and we appreciate you very much and everything you've done. You really have. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
And please read the strategy.
I move that we go into executive session for Utah Code 52-4-2051C, strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation.
Moving seconded, that we go into executive session for the stated reason, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion...